... President of the United States of America and the good republic, gorgeous hands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we welcome everybody to our December meeting. And I see some well-dressed people here and I'm looking forward to the community training that's coming. So, that's on the agenda. Let's get right to the introduction. Ms. Gerald Buchanan, I'm the president of the board.
Ladies and gentlemen, vice president of the board.
Juana Smith, secretary.
Juana Smith, treasurer.
I'm Jeff, trustee.
The chairman, Louis, board trustee.
Michael Poore, trustee.
Wanda Sup Robinson, superintendent.
Debbie Trump, associate superintendent for administrative services.
David Turner, associate superintendent for human resources and labor relations.
And Linda Wood, associate superintendent for instruction.
And also we have Mr. Cole Christian, who is keeping record for us tonight, as well as Mrs. Charlotte Anderson, who handles everything else.[87.42][87.42](Laughter). We're going to get right into student staff recognition. The Anti-Defamation League Art Works Contest winners. The goal of the Art Works A D L was to engage, empower, and educate the Detroit community about the mission and impact of the A D L through art. The contest winners are Victoria Stern from Vandenberg Elementary, Christopher Mosby from Levy Middle School, Brittany Hill from Southfield High School, runner's up Anya Scotts, Rochelle Schefter, Taylor Johnson Burkey. And honorable mentions were Amari Gilbert, Anzio Allen, Darian Davis, Christopher Turner, and Andrea Freeval. So, we might...are any of these students here tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, then, please come up to the podium.[143.12][143.12](Applause).
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, I took this picture a day after the Vandenberg received an eye in my face. When I was taking this picture, I just stood there and observed the beauty of the scene. The American flag at half-staff and the majestic Detroit skyline in the background made utterly beautiful, yet heartening image. I decided I should edit this picture by making it black and white, except for the American flag, symbolizing, no matter how devastating something is that happens in America, there will always be light at the end of the tunnel. The American spirits will be strong enough to bring color back to the full picture.
Who are you?[206.51][206.51](Laughter). Nice to meet you, Christopher. And, you know, what other artworks do you have? I mean, they're just...
I have a whole lot of pictures I've taken on my computer at home. And I have, currently, I'm working on a wall in my room of all pictures I've taken.
They're pretty cool. And you're at Levy Middle School, what grade are you in?
Eighth.
Wow. That'd be a lot, a lot of regis upcoming from here, since you're in this bar in the eighth grade. Mr. Moore asked you to please step right to the front of the podium, so that Ms. Robinson can get a picture of you. They took you there. Can you just look to the right, I'd like to congratulate you as well. No, in the front, in the front.
Also, the president, her art teacher is here. I'd like for her to come to the podium and welcome the principal, and just say a few words. And I was there that evening, and Southfield was well represented. And it was just beautiful to see all the Southfield students winning all the top awards.[282.77][282.77](Applause).
Lisa Herman, I teach art at Levy. Levy, I've been there now, was it my fifth year, I think? I'm in the district...more years than that. And I'm just so proud of Chris. He really is an amazing talent. He's got this eye that a kid like him doesn't have. So, it's really cool to see him be able to do the kinds of things he's been doing at the camera this year. And you don't see him in the hallways at school without his camera. He carries it around with him all day long. He stays in my room for safekeeping, and he comes and gets it when he needs it. He's taking pictures every single day. He's on the yearbook staff this year, so it's pretty exciting to see him doing the things he's doing. I'm really lucky to have had him in class. His parents have been very supportive, and it's a really great family, so it's great. Great to have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you say his parents and mom ask if he can please stand up to be recognized as one.[355.31][355.31](Applause). I saw you up there with your camera, so I see regis.[363.22][363.22](Laughter).
I want to say, none of this could have happened. I'm sorry. None of this could have happened without an art teacher who saw a vision in him. Of course, you know that Lisa, partnering with Molly McNeese, has pioneered in the district the Inside Out Project. Last year, she comes in the cafeteria, puts this paper up on the wall, and here comes Christopher. Christopher did all the Inside Out pictures for Levy last year. So, he got the start, she saw it in him, and he ran with it. And I've watched him bloom, and I'm just being very excited. Excited for his future. Thank you.[402.22][402.22](Applause).
Are there any other of his winners of the contest here tonight?
Our teachers here. I thought I might be...the principals, come on down. Come on down. Have you could just speak briefly about your students? They were all there at the event with me that evening, and it was just wonderful.
Well, my student was Victoria Stern, who won. She made a painting. I wish I had a picture, but I don't because I believe, was that a copy?
Yeah.
They kept, A D L kept everything. So, but it was beautiful. She's just, Victoria has a natural style, and she, you know, she just really put it all together. And it was, you know, all about, you know, people being together, you know? No hate. It was no place for hate.
No. That was Julie Wolf.[475.41][475.41](Laughter). Our teacher at Vandenberg, extraordinary art teacher. When teachers see talent in children, and nurture it, and set children up to challenge themselves, that's what personifies exemplary teaching, in my opinion. Julie is that. She brings out the best in students and is constantly figuring out ways to challenge students.
Thank you.
To make connections between art and the core content. But I want to thank the board and cabinet. A lot of districts have suffered the budget crises that we have over the years, and many, if not most, have cut the arts. For some children, the arts are the hook to learning. Christopher was mine.[538.29][538.29](Laughter). Christopher, the writing that you wrote to go with that picture, fantastic. And you didn't write like that when you were mine.[551.32][551.32](Laughter). So, you've come a long way, thanks to Levy and art, and that's true for a lot of children. So, keep up the good work. Arts are the critical hook for a whole lot of our kids. So, thank you.[566.16][566.16](Applause).
Okay. Next up for, from the Optimist Club, we have Mr. George Chap here. Mr. Chap is here to introduce the Optimist Club's Students of the Month. And they are Courtney Berberick from Southfield High School, Nicole Kena from Southfield Leitrop High School, Ronald Nicholson from University High School Academy, and Kaylin Buss from Southfield Regional Academic Campus. Please chap.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, superintendent, and community. Each month, Miss Ali Cobard, the president of the Optimist Club, Southfield Winter Village, presents Students of the Month. We receive nominations from school counselors, principals, and other members of the community of students that exhibit extraordinary fortitude, academic excellence, have overcome incredible obstacles in their own personal lives, and most importantly, demonstrated what's the best of being a human being.
Yeah.
And so, I'm very happy, and I'd like to actually have these four students come up to the podium, just so that they can introduce themselves, and tell us a little bit about their future plans. So, Kaylin, Courtney, Nicole, Ron, Ronald, if you're here, I'd like you to come on up.[645.61][645.61](Applause).
Good evening, everyone. I'm Courtney Berberick, and I live at the Southfield High School.
Good evening.
Oh, I'm in the 12th grade at Southfield High School. I am the current president of Southfield Student Council. I am involved in social circles. I am also in the robotics engineering program. Last year, I was the project manager. I am also involved in our school principal council for the head of organization. Each one is chosen to sit with our board. And I am also involved in the Blue Jay Cafe. Recently, this opened up after being closed down for numerous amount of years, and we have been very successful for the last year. And I am the manager of that.[698.13][698.13](Applause).
Courtney has been very modest, as in the words of Ms. Porter, can get it done. And she has a great work and personal life balance. And I know that her teachers, and I know on behalf of the Optimist Club, we're very proud of her.
Thank you.[720.44][720.44](Applause).
And if I see a model, if you're modeling, you can please stand to be recognized.[753.82][753.82](Applause). Okay. Next, we have Nancy Govan, the accounting specialist, finance department. Was received certification from the Michigan Institute for Educational Management. Ms. Govan.
This certification was a three-year process, going to the conferences in Grand Rapids. It was very interesting getting to meet some folks doing the same thing as yourself across the state in business communications, Excel, LinkedIn, dealing with parents and staff, and dealing with personalities that are unique in the workplace. One thing that they did not teach, however, was public speaking.[815.51][815.51](Laughter). With that being said, thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations.[821.13][821.13](Applause). It also happens to be Nancy's birthday.[828.13][828.13](Cheers).
Okay, now we get to the student board representatives. And first up, we have Ms. Kennedy Armstrong from Southfield Regional Academic Campus.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Kennedy Armstrong, and I am your student board member from Southfield Regional Academic Campus.[872.73][872.73](Applause). Okay. On November 13th, five students were admitted to Talladega College. I'm sure Mr. Goldner would love for me to repeat that statement, so five students from S RAC were admitted to Talladega College on November 13th.[894.44][894.44](Applause). Wow, do you see that? Is that charter bus for us? Needless to say, our eighth and ninth graders were pleasantly surprised when they saw a huge white charter bus pull up to our school on November 15th. Twenty-three students, along with Mrs. Stark, Mr. Constant, and Ms. Johnson, attended the gear-up program at U of M Ann Arbor. On the same day, November 15th, Mrs. Tensman, Mrs. Gills, Mrs. Albert, and 28 students got on a bus heading north on I-75 to U of M Flint for a campus presentation and tour. During the week of November 18th, counselors met with juniors to complete their educational development plan, research scholarships, and identify community service opportunities. On November 19th, Mrs. Owens from the Birmingham Bloomfield Arts Center reviewed the student portfolio. The goal is to increase each student's opportunity to earn a scholarship worth $2,300. On November 19th, students from Southfield Regional Academic Campus semesters sponsored a miniature golf tournament during the school day. This activity was a fundraiser and a team-building activity filled with funds and prizes. On November 21st, Women of Tomorrow seniors were invited to the tires club for scholarship opportunities. November 22nd through 24th, Mr. Solomon, Ms. Johnson, and nine S RAC students from the Nesbee-Southfield City Ride Chapter, including myself, were in full force as they attended the 2013 Bar Regional Conference for the National Society of Life Engineers. While attending the conference, students were able to attend various tours, they competed in Nesbee Academic Games, and were also able to attend the college and career fair. Today, Women of Tomorrow members toured Wayne State University. Since my last school board report, Dorsey College, Talladega, U of M Flint, and U of M Dearborn have come to Southfield Regional Academic Campus to meet with interested students. Happy holidays, good evening, and thank you for your time.[1026.82][1026.82](Applause).
Next up is David Cole from Southfield High.
Hello, to the board of education, superintendent, administrators, and community members. My name is David Cole, and here's a blue day report. Students at Southfield High have kept up the good work. Three hundred and twenty-three students made the honor roll for the second car mark.[1054.82][1054.82](Applause). Now, for one-third of the student population, the senior class has maintained the highest numbers on the honor roll with 109 students, and the freshman is holding strong with 85 students having above a 3.0 GPA. There are 72 college acceptance letters currently displayed in the main office hallway, eight of which are to Michigan State and two to the University of Michigan. Last year, around this time, the Scholar Plus team set up a movie showing in the S H S auditorium to help fundraise money for Southfield families in need. We made somewhere around $300 in gift cards, and they were distributed to the families anonymously by the counselors for the holidays. This year, Scholar Plus president David Cole, along with vice president Charles Murphy and the rest of the Scholar Plus staff, helped to do the same thing this year and raised more money with the approval of Dr. Wood. Also, Scholar Plus inducted 13 new members since we last met. The junior class will have the A C T practice day Wednesday, December 11th, in the field house. This will be a good practice for the juniors on adjusting to the testing environment and process that they will have in March. Lawrence Marshall became only the fifth player in 28 years at Southfield High to be named Dream Team, Allstate, and Football in the Detroit Pre-Press. Malik McDowd, Lawrence Marshall, and Chuk O'Gore-Four were named Division One and Two First Team, Allstate, and Football. Jakuma O'Gore-Four was named honorable mention, Allstate. Marshall, McDowd, O'Gore-Four, Carteris Carter, and Jordan Cryer all made the All Metro North Football Team. The Lady J basketball team started its 2013-14 campaign with a 30-20 win over Redford Union last week. The Blue Jay basketball team is currently playing in a season opener against Dearborn Heights Robe Shaw right now. The Blue Jay wrestling team opened the season up at Birmingham Grove this past week, going 3-2 in the tournament, and Keith Lee was awarded tournament MVP. I would like to thank you again for giving me this wonderful opportunity and representing my school at the Board of Education. Let's go Southfield with Blue Jay's sword.[1197.82][1197.82](Applause).
Gregory Cunningham from University High School.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Martin Gregory Cunningham from the school board for University High School. I'd like to start by congratulating the 17 students who are being inducted into the National Honor Society. Induction is on December 12th, this Thursday, at Michigan First Credit Union. Many of our clubs have done community service and or volunteered in various places over the past few months. Our club did space painting at the fall festivals at Adler and Vandenberg. Students assisted Michigan First Credit Union for Shred Day and Sanity Day. Students helped with turkey breast assembly/distribution at Stevenson Elementary. Student Congress and National Honor Society students volunteered at Kmart in Detroit to assist vessel Detroit's community families. National Honor Society is raising funds to support Bush upon a teen's technology drive. And U H S A raised $501 to support the campus food kitchen and $532 to support breast cancer research. Our club called United for Christ, planted trees with the dreaming of Detroit, and later this month, students will pass out food baskets and Christmas gifts to senior citizens in approximately 20 senior living facilities in the metro Detroit area. And also, students will serve as host, as hostess to 150 students, children of incarcerated parents through the Angel Tree Outreach Program sponsored by Oak World. They will also assist with handing out gifts to children ages infant to 19 years age. That is all. Thank you, have a good night, have a holiday.[1300.13][1300.13](Applause).
And Mr. Barry Green from Southfield Elementary High School.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The Fine Arts Academy sponsored two dance contests this past week. Auditions for Your Good Man, Charlie Brown, are being held this week. The musical will take place in this spring. The Medical Academy was invited to Michigan State University School of Medicine and toured the campus. Thirty-five students were allowed to participate in actual dissection and identification of human organs. Students were given scrubs and will also be allowed to job shadow for future visits. Also, 20 more Medical Academy students will be receiving CPR and A E D training on December 18th. The International Bachelor's Diploma Program hosted annual induction ceremony this past week. The National Honor Society also has held their induction ceremony last late November. Three hundred and seventy-two students made the honor roll for the second car mark in period. This is 35% of the student body. A special recognition ceremony will take place on the first semester, after the first semester ends, for honor roll students. Student Congress hosted a blood drive in the school library. The goal of 45 pints of blood was reached. The four ranked Lady Chargers defeated Renaissance in Chelsea High Schools last week, but were defeated by Benton Harbor High School at a tournament in Gilton, Illinois, in Wisconsin City. The men's basketball team plays Southfield Christian today at the first game. Thank you.[1397.51][1397.51](Applause).
And now we turn the meeting over to the superintendent's board of representatives.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm going to begin by inviting Ms. Molly McNeese up to the podium. And while she's walking up to the podium, I'd like to ask everyone in the room to just take a look at the beautiful artwork that is around. And she's going to tell us a little bit about that podium, if we can get you on camera.
Good evening, everybody, again. I'm Molly McNeese, I'm the art teacher at the Southfield Regional Academic Campus, and I'm so proud to show and display the work of my students here in the office of J W E. The portraits on the west wall are self-portraits done by my students. They're done with India ink. And the process was, the students took their photographs, their portraits themselves, and we used the school camera, and then we uploaded them and printed off a picture using our printer at school, so we had a black and white photograph to look at. And we talked a lot about value and portraiture, and the history of portraits, and artists currently and in the past that have done portraits of themselves. And we talked about expression and value, which is going from dark to light. Finally, as we were looking at these artists, the students individually projected their portrait on the wall and used a pencil to outline the portrait, and then individually they took a Q-tip and dipped it in the different values of ink to get the different dots. So, that's how that effect is created. I was very proud because last month, I took 15 students to Lansing for the Michigan portfolio review, and one of the recruiters from the College of Creative Studies was looking at my students' work. And the boy on the end, on the far left, that's Khalil Hughes, and he's one of my top talented artists, one that the Birmingham Bloomfield Arts Center is recommending that he get the scholarship for $2,300. And this will allow my advanced placement students to get any class that they feel would be an addition to their portfolio for scholarships to college. So, I'm very, very proud of Khalil and the other students that are represented that are some of my top students. Then the portraits in the back of the room are portraits done in the same manner, but except with the ink. They really looked at themselves on a writing basis, and they wrote down about themselves and looked at the words that they used. And Gabby, which is on the far left with the red hair, she will be going to school for movie makeup FX magic. And so, she will be creating the zombies that you will be seeing on the Walk of Death. And so, those portraits, I'm very, very proud of. I could talk about each student. The ones in the middle were carved out using a linoleum cutter, which is a very specialized knife, onto a block of linoleum. And those students have a very small class, so we all got together and not only printed those, but they wanted to keep printing. So, we printed out bugs, and it takes quite a process to get professional ink and brayers. And I believe Ms. Herman from Levy loaned me some brayers of hers that I need to return. And really, did some really incredible...and that is done, that can be done with multiple prints on the smaller portraits. And finally, the portrait to our right here at S RAC is the first year of, again, receiving eighth-grade students, and we looked at one of my favorite artists, Shepherd Ferry, who did the Barack Obama Hope print for the campaign in 1998. And so, if you look at the portraits, we looked at warm and cool colors, and they used acrylic paint to really get the sense of bringing ourselves forward in space, or using the cool colors to bring depth into the painting, so using the warm and the cool colors. Then finally, I have some portraits on the top of the stairs, which is not accessible to the normal person like myself, but if you go way back to the far and peek up the stairs, there's some oil patchell portraits based on the artist's quote, which are gridded using mathematics. And I'd always like to thank the school board for supporting the arts, as was said before, and we appreciate this beautiful space, and we're looking forward to the Inside Out Project this year, to all of our next portfolio trips, and our business collaborations, and to be the jewel of our district. Thank you.[1716.13][1716.13](Applause).
This evening, for the board and the community, I have a real treat for you. Every year, I have the opportunity of going to visit Mr. Rasio's class, to participate in their fashion show or their talent show, and they always have a good dinner.[1742.82][1742.82](Laughter). But this year, I was out of town. So, I invited them here this evening because I could not miss the performance, and I also wanted to share it with the board. So, I'm going to ask her if she would come up with her students, and they have a performance for us.[1756.51][1756.51](Applause). I hope they will come up so they can walk around with this. Will they come up?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, my name is Felicity Rasio, and I'm with the Support Service Department. This is the diva.[1773.13][1773.13](Laughter). I teach the Mo Hi program at Southfield High School. Recently, my students had a talent fashion show at the Blue Jay Cafe at Southfield High School. Thank you, Mr. Warren. They performed in front of a full house, including the mayor of Southfield, and everyone had a wonderful time. They performed the songs that they're going to sing for you today. I couldn't bring everybody, I only brought five students, you know, because of the time limitation, but I just wanted to...
But I just wanted to thank Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson for inviting us, as she always does. And this means so much to all of our students and all of our parents. We have wonderful parents. And I would like for them to all stand up, the parents, so that we can... This is the way it's going to go. I'm going to bring out Angelo. He likes to be, sit down for a second, guys. He likes to be called, sit down for a second. Okay, I'll call you all, Angelo. He likes to be called Appleman. But he's going to come up and he's going to sing Amazing by Big Time Rush. And then we have Nicholas Green, who's going to be singing Don't Wake Me Up by Chris Brown. Nana Opah is going to sing Any Kind of Guy by Big Time Rush. They all like Big Time Rush. David DeGraffery will sing We Are by Big Time Rush. And Arne is going to come up, last but not least, and sing what?
What?
And you're going to sing the Hokey Pokey. And that's what it is going to be. Thank you. So first of all, without further ado, we're going to have Appleman come up. And Appleman is going to sing Amazing by Big Time Rush.
I can't do the Hokey Pokey. I want to say thank you, Mr. Rasio and the students. Oh, my goodness. Sometimes we're saying, it's a sad tonight that art is the cook for some students. When reading and math and speaking and communication are difficult for some students, they have the heart. They have the heart and the motivation. So I want to say thank you, thank you, thank you. And we will be back next time to do some of Hokey Pokey.
Keep the arts.
We do, we believe in the arts.
Keep the arts, Captain.
Last month, I shared with the board that we had a team from the Aspen group that came from California to develop a film here in Southfield on the internet and women focusing on our students. Two weeks ago, the video went live coast to coast. We have been receiving phone calls from all over the country asking us questions, and particularly about our little Bussie students using handheld phones in the classroom. So I would like to show the board and the community that film as well. And I think Jackie will clean that up on our website as well.
Yes, it's on our TV sixteen right now.
It's on TV sixteen, oh, so. So we'll be hearing more, and I'll be sharing more with the board and the community, the comments that are coming in. And also, someone from Craig's List sent me an email and said, "How can we help you?" So you know I have an answer for that. So I will keep the board informed. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to my secretary.
Good evening. My reports may contain the consent agenda.
Good evening, board and community. Happy holidays to the folks that are in the district and for you as well. Enjoy your break time. When it gets to you, we won't see you again before New Year's. So a happy New Year. My reports are contained in the consent agenda as well as the other items. Thank you.
Well, it starts with me. And I do have a report this evening, but it's a very exciting report. I'd like for Mr. George Chat to come to the podium. And we're going to update the board and the community this evening about the exciting work that we are embarking upon as relates to our 2013-14 textbook adoption process. So, Mr. Chat, would you kindly share with all of the board and the community what we're engaged in and a timeline?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Again, evening to members of Board of Education, Superintendent and the community. The Division of Instruction, under the leadership of Dr. Wood and also Dr. Cook Robinson, we begun the process of undertaking a comprehensive textbook and material review process. This is the first time, I would say, in several years that the district has undertaken this process. And really, the first time that has been done in this type of comprehensive manner. And so I wanted to take just a few moments and go over the process, and just tell you certain basic rationale. We know that there are shifts in educational mandates with Common Core standards for math and English Language Arts, upcoming standards for next generation standards for science, high stakes assessments like the smarter balance. We know there's shifts in instructional practice, differentiated instruction, which our district has been doing for several years now. And again, you know, it's evidenced by our relationships with ASCD and also with the Aspen Institute. Shifts in technology, e-learning, bring your own devices or BYOD, e-text. And past economic challenges that otherwise may have been prohibitive toward engaging in this type of comprehensive adoption process or recommendation process, we are now looking at a slightly better, fine, feasible situation. And it may be high time for us to engage in this process. So all of those things factor into our textbook recommendations. At the core of this, though, it's still about good teaching, it's still about good learning, and it's about finding texts and resources that align to the major shifts that are underway with our Common Core standards, as well as our state standards and benchmarks. Making sure that students have a higher depth of knowledge, making sure that they're able to engage across curriculum activities, reading for informational complexity, so on and so forth. And that's not just in English language classrooms. That's in mathematics, that's in science, that's in social studies. And most importantly, making sure that we have texts and resources that are aligned so that our students come out of Southfield schools even more prepared, college and career ready. So where we're focusing right now, again, this is a very comprehensive process. We are looking at grades K through twelve for English Language Arts. In the mathematics, we're looking at the comprehensive core high school courses. In science, K-5, as well as high school core science courses. And then the social studies, K-5, most middle school, and also all core high school classes that count towards students' graduation requirements. In terms of the criteria that we've established for publishers that will be submitting samples, we want to make sure that these are good textbooks, but they're aligned to the standards, as I've said before, Common Core, Next Gen Standards, the Michigan Curriculum Framework. We want to make sure that the content is engaging, but it has rigor. There's no point in adopting new texts if students are not going to be able to engage. Making sure that in terms of instruction, that there's good research, good research and good research-based resources to help differentiate. And also with technology, we want to make sure that these students have access to e-learning tools, e-text. That's incredibly important as we make this transition from traditional textbooks, maybe more toward digital type of learning platforms. And also, professional development. We want to make sure that whatever recommendations are submitted to the board, that those recommendations for potential adoption are backed by strong and comprehensive professional development for our teachers and for our administrators of the board. And so review. December, we began our textbook review committee. We actually had our first meeting yesterday with thirty-plus teachers throughout the district in all core content areas. Our request for proposals has been finalized. Ms. Martha Ritchie is helping to spearhead that and answering questions from vendors and publishers as they come through. And we have completed with the assistance of Alma Dean, who's been instrumental with this, developing an evaluation tool, an evaluation rubric that's very comprehensive that will give us very, very good lens as to the work committees will be engaged in. In January, committees will convene. They will evaluate sample textbooks and materials. The community will have an opportunity also to view these textbooks, these materials that may be under consideration for potential adoption or recommended adoption. And then finally, the content review committees will report out to the Division of Instruction and the Association Superintendent their preliminary recommendations. With that said, come February, the real homework begins, doing cost, content analysis based on the recommendations from these committees, with a final recommendation being presented to you, the Board of Education, for potential review and consideration for adoption. And that is my report. I'll be more than happy to take any questions that you have.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Given that the corps is going to have to follow the core curriculum, I know you and Dr. Wood attend the Teaching and Learning Council, which is made up of individuals from all of open counties. Are other open county districts doing this process as well?
To various degrees, there are processes in place, but nothing that I know of, and Dr. Wood can speak to this one more thoroughly, that I know that is discomprehensive.
So where would this put us in terms of being up to date on our textbooks and being ready for the course and raising student achievement?
This would move us to being a core leader in the county in relationship to having an adoption with resources that are the most advanced and relates preparing for the Common Core, smarter balance assignments, and the most up-to-date electronic platform.
We realize that students, there is a fine balance between making that bridge toward e-learning and e-text. There's still some place for physical textbooks and maybe socioeconomic, maybe some students don't have access, regular access to the internet or computers at home. Some students, when we look at lower grade levels in elementary, still very tactile, very hands-on, consumable base. So we know you have to have a fine balance. But like Dr. Wood said, it would put us in the vanguard, in the forefront of the county with having state-of-the-art technologies and, you know, up-to-the-moment, updated text. Yes, Ms. Cat?
How is your committee divided among the grades or above the district's different criteria?
Within the committees themselves, they can be divided, they've been divided by grade, by cohorts in the elementaries. You have cohorts of K through two teachers, grades through five, who are recognized, there's differences between lower L and upper L, and there may be a different lens of looking at. When we move into secondary, we're really focused more on the actual courses themselves. So having individuals that have been engaged in VI, been engaged in the district's cadre for, you know, Take One with National Board, having training in advanced placement, you know, to advanced placement courses.
How about the subject matter?
Subject matter as well. So we have, we have individuals sitting on those committees that they are engaged in the instructional practice. If you are there evaluating chemistry textbooks, they're teaching chemistry. If they're evaluating economics texts, they're evaluating those texts. Some teachers, many teachers have taught multiple courses over their career. So they bring a different lens. I can tell you, within the social studies or high school, we have a teacher that teaches economics, US history, but also was a special education teacher in the district. So he brings that lens as well.
Well, I don't know how this is going to do.
Absolutely. Well, in terms of mathematics, mathematics, at the high school level, we have persons that are on the committee. They teach statistics. They have taught or currently teach algebra, geometry, in many cases, advanced placement. Are there any other questions from the board?
I just have a comment. I'll have questions over the month when we get to really get into the meeting. So, but just from the overview and kind of where we are, I see we may be able to present something about how we took this undertaking upon us.
Absolutely.
And how we're vanguards and what have you.
Absolutely.
And let's see whatever we need to do.
I can tell you, I can tell you, being, you know, I still, in my heart, I'm still a teacher, this is incredibly exciting work. It really is. And to be able to, you know, I wish it could have been the meeting we had yesterday with the teachers. There was genuine excitement. They really are really looking forward to getting into this work and really doing, I cannot say, we have a very good cohort of educators and teacher leaders that are going beyond these committees. So I'm very excited to be able to do that work and support Dr. Wood and present to the board at future meetings, the results of that committee work.
There was also a lot of competition to give on the committee.
Yeah.
We actually had to apply, if you were applying for a job, because we were looking for someone that was math secondary, had experience in these areas and so on, put that matrix, and wanted to put that matrix together. We were looking for specific experiences and contests when they came. And a couple people CC'd me on the evening. That's all. I knew the competition was fierce. Everybody wants to be on the committee.
And they're represented from across the building, all across the district. Every building has someone that is participating on one of the levels of this review. And so I am, I'm very pleased. And you want, oh, I'm so sorry. You mentioned also about the process, and we'll be able to talk about it. I have to say that I know that I've served on several review committees across my tenure as an educator, and Alma and also Mr. Chat. And I feel that we probably have put together one of the best review processes. There are not many districts that I know of, of our side, that actually put out an RFP for, with all the specifications. Vendors are not calling teachers right now. There's a process. And I'm looking forward to sharing that process more intimately with the board, with Mr. Chat and Ms. Dean, because they are serving as co-chairs with me on this effort. And I'm very pleased, I really am. And I look forward to what the vendors will be sharing and the recommendations and reviews of our teachers. Thank you. Thank you. That concludes my report for this evening.
Okay, and now we have a report from Head Start Program. I'm sure this will be a report that...
I have one report today. Are we glad to report to the next meeting?
Just to make the community aware, though, that we have, we just had our board governance meeting with the Bussie Center. So it was the parent governance council, or the governing council there, met with our board, which is required by Head Start, by the grant from the federal government that we do meet. That meeting is taking place, it was last week. And it was a very good meeting, very informative. So our program is moving forward. And Bussie is really, really the biggest secret in Southfield. And we now have additional seats now. Okay, you want to talk, you want to speak to that?
I'll just, I believe it's about 249 students we now are able to serve at Bussie. Last two years, it's been 190, and we used to have like a waiting list of about 80. And obviously, the need was there. So I was so happy that House of Counsel, Board of Education, and Ms. Hill and her staff were able to make that happen. And there's additional information in our, not the consent agenda, yes. And one of our reports, we have that coming up as well.
Okay. All right. And now we get to the final portion of the meeting, our agenda. I would take a motion to open and approve the consent agenda.
I move. We open a consent agenda.
Move and support it. Are there any questions with regard to the consent agenda? I know we'll come on through thoroughly by the board prior to the meeting. Are there any questions? Hearing none, Ms. Cat, too. Please call for the vote.
Okay. Trustee Paul?
Yes.
Trustee Ruins?
Yes.
Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Cat?
Yes.
Myself, yes. President Buchanan?
Yes.
In the end.
Thank you. This time, I'll take a motion to open and approve Report 5227, the newer revised policy. This is the second reading and approval of both policies. Move and support it. Are there any questions from the board? Hearing none, Ms. Cat, too. Please call for the vote.
Myself, yes. Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Trustee Cat?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Paul?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
President Buchanan?
Yes. Thank you.
Just so public is aware, we've gone through and revised some of our operating policies for the board. And I can bore you with the details of it. We do this in order to make sure that we stay compliant with changes in the law that seem to be coming more frequently now at our current legislature. Seems to want to dip their hand into the school politics more and more. I'll take a motion to open and approve Report 5228, new positions and enrollment special for the grade start rating program classes. Support it. Move and support it. Are there any questions?
I would like to say that since we approved it, the board needs to revise policy changes. And now it's the board's turn to approve it.
And also, well, is there, is there, do we need to do an adendum to that, or is it as is?
As, as given, the Bussie Council approved the two part-time positions.
Right. But I just know that there was some question about the board.
Well, I think it was correct at the fourth meeting. Yes, I think it was correct. It was all right.
Okay. All right. And is there no further, is there no further discussion? Could you please call for the vote? Could you please call for the vote?
Trustee Poole?
Yes.
Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Trustee Cass?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
President Buchanan?
Yes.
Give me a minute.
And also I'd like to know that this has known that in fact this, the, these two positions come out of the grant for the grade start readiness program, it doesn't come out right now. All right, next we have Report 5229, taking a motion to open and approve the supplemental staff agreement for mayor staff.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the secretary, please call for the vote.
Quick question, where are they located, mayor staff? Is that here in Michigan?
The main office is located in Troy, in Troy.
You call for the vote, I'll go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ma.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Cass?
Yes.
Trustee Poole?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
President Buchanan?
Yes.
Give me a minute.
I'll take a motion to open and approve Report 5230, the approval of the lease agreement extension for Shane School, supplemental.
Support.
Okay, move and support it. Are there any questions? Hearing none, the secretary, please call for the vote.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Trustee Poole?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Cass?
Yes.
President Buchanan?
Yes.
Give me a minute.
Okay, thank you. We now have information on items that do not require board action, bill summary of bills that fall below the threshold of needing board approval, as well as the purchasing report, but I do want to put in the record and have this noted. And Report 5233, gifts to the board. Board Vice President Rand D. Williams donated a gift of $300 to the Southfield Public Schools Foundation on behalf of the Angela Correa Smith Williams Memorial Fund. These funds are designated to support the reading and the district's Revolution Read initiative. Thank you very much. Thank you. We now come to the public participation portion of the meeting. And do we, no agreement? All right. We don't even have to touch it. So we get to board matters, where the board has an opportunity to share with the community issues that are, that we've been dealing with, and we'll start with Trustee Poole.
Yes, if I may, Board President, let's take a moment of silence for the life of Mr. Nelson Mandela. Out of the night, it covers me, black as a pitch from pole to ball. I thank whatever God dare be, unconquered so. In the fair clutches of circumstance, I did not wench nor cry aloud beneath the blood and means of chance. My head is bloody, but in bow, beneath this veil of wrath and tears, looms out the horror of the shade, and yet the minutes of the year. Find and shall find me unafraid. It matters not how straight the gate, how charged the punishmentless scroll. I'm the master of my fate, the captain of myself. That was Mandela's, one of his most, most loved poems. It's Invictus. It's a poem that I've learned years and years and years ago, and it's a Victorian poem. Invictus is the Latin word for uncongrat. And I think the history books will mention Mr. Nelson Mandela as being one of the most popular change agents the world has ever seen. Now, most of us were elected or on the board back in 2009. We were change agents, and we definitely ran out the gift of our position. In times like this, you could look at it, you could tell what she was going through, but she didn't bow her head, she didn't let on that things were at best giffy. Late-night study sessions, what if this happens, what if the economy goes this way, what if funding goes that way? Things that we don't discuss in the public, but the challenges were there, and we didn't always all agree. But we somehow or another made it happen. And diversity is good. Diversity is good. I think it's important that as we go into the holiday season, we look back and give thanks for the things that we were blessed with. And I think for us as a board, we can look back, thirteen-point-three million dollars in scholarships to our students. You know, and the money wasn't the big challenge for me. At the end of the day, at night, what really kept me up at night, what student care? Were we doing the right thing for our students? It was never about the money. It was about, were we doing the right thing for our community and how these decisions affected our students? Michigan Association School Board honor award. Michigan Association School Board Award of Excellence. Michigan Association Superintendent, Association State and Regional Superintendent of the Year. Someone told me one time that out of adversity comes progress. And I think we've been faced with a lot of diversity, each and every one of us. American School Board Journal Magna Award. I'm just going through the magazine, and all of a sudden, pow! The Southfield Public School Board is in this national magazine, each and every one of them. It's on the website too, National School Board Association website, links right to Four gates, Millennium Scholars. I've talked to many school boards that haven't handled them, that are a lot larger than ours. This is the big one. Advanced Ed and NCA District-wide Accreditation. I talk to community members, all the schools are this and schools are that. I graduated back in the sixties, then I'm seventy. Were the schools good? Yeah, schools were good, but we're even better now. But don't take my word for it. You went to Michigan State, they're NCA accredited. You went to University of Michigan, they're NCA accredited. And we are too. Dual enrollment, virtual high school, international baccalaureate programs, K-12 students, STEM Stain and Euro programs, Revolution Reads, Celebrity Reads. This doesn't make good for a business model. This does not make good for a business model. I don't know how we did it, but I'm thankful that we're able to accomplish it. So as we get ready for the holiday, to celebrate Christmas, let's give thanks for all the blessings that we've been blessed with. Remember the reading for this season, Merry Christmas, and have a prosperous new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Poole. Ms. Lewis?
To the city of Southfield, Southfield Lake, it's the Southfield Township, I would just like to say, I'm happy to sit on the fact that this is probably the last board meeting of 2013, and I would just like to thank you for allowing me to serve you for this entire school year. And I would just like to end this last board meeting by saying Merry Christmas and have a Happy New Year, and God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Ms. Cass?
I would like to wish the same. I want to wish you a Happy Holiday, a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year. And I want to tell you how proud I am to be part of this district. Thank you very much.
And thank you for all you do. Trustee Robinson?
Smart Christmas, everyone, have a safe and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Trustee Smith?
Yes, just a few things before the New Year. I want to mention to parents and staff, teachers, that I came across a Misty application, otherwise known as App, for phones called Remind 101. It's free, and it's out there for you as staff numbers or teachers or parents to use to remind family members about, don't forget to pick up your brother, or don't forget the game after school, mom or dad, and it, it texts, but it doesn't go to your cell phone. You get a five-eight-six number that is, you know, so you don't have to put your personal business out there, if it's for your classroom. The second thing is, and it's two-part, it's just about, I shouldn't say just, but it has to do a lot with Dear Nelson Mandela. I didn't want to leave without sharing a personal testimony and how that correlates to some of my visions and goals for serving the community in terms of advocacy for this school district. And I think President Obama, I was brushing the dust out of my eyes on the way to work this morning, and I got a chance to hear him speak to the crowd at the stadium in South Africa. And the one thing that he said that resonated with me was that Nelson Mandela was a true advocate. Sure, he was advocating for justice and peace and harmony, and in some sense, that's what we do at the board. We advocate for justice, peace, and harmony through education and learning. So that is my, my desire to not let Nelson Mandela's legacy go without, without being important to the people in my generation and how, just a quick blurb from Cosby Show, any of you who remember Nelson and Winnie, that was probably my first exposure to Dear Nelson and his lovely wife Winnie. So the Cosby Show is still teaching and educating through, through media. And Happy New Year, Happy Holidays, keep up the good work.
Thank you. Vice President Williams?
As we continue to move from good to great, I heard that over the weekend from our esteemed colleagues, we were in training classes where you learn that spring more often. We've been, we're being asked more and more to speak within the state of Michigan, on state level, and we also will be speaking in February, nationally. So we have done what we have set out to do in 2009, and we continue to improve. So I'd like to say also, thanks, thank the community for all that they do and for their support. We look forward to 2014, safe, happy holidays.
Thank you. I echo the sentiment of all those in regards to great Nelson Mandela who has passed on to glory. And interesting, I also heard something that President Obama said this morning, that he makes, makes you want, his words were, he makes me want to be a better man, that he speaks to, to the best in us. And that's important that, you know, we take this time as we reflect on that life, not just to, you know, grieve his passing, but understand the importance of that life and what that means to each one of us as individuals, that we do want to be better men, better women, better parents, better aunts and uncles, and better guardians, as we are, of, of the public trust. And so as we strive daily for greatness, we have to reflect on that and take into consideration that a very humble man rose to greatness just by standing up for what he believes in, and that's something that we can all learn from here as well, that the humblest, the humblest thing can lead to greatness. And not necessarily everybody recognizes that, because if you're doing things just for recognition, you need to check that, okay? If you're only doing it as self-serving, that you did, that you got recognized, you didn't get recognized, you know, you need to check that, because it's not about that. When you're in service, it's, it's just that, it's service. It's not about who gets credit for anything, it's not about, you know, whether that, you know, somebody else saw it. Did you do it with your best intentions, with your heart involved in that? And that's all that really matters. And then if you go out and act, we'll all make this world a better place, because we'll all have that, that same walking principle every single day. I want to wish everybody a very Happy Holidays and a very prosperous New Year. And prosperous not meaning that we're going to make more money, prosperous in that we're going to do better than we did in 2013. And whatever that means for you, that's something different for everybody, what it is, you know, how you base your prosperity. So let's be more prosperous than 2014. That's it. Our next meeting is December 17th at six o'clock, which is our student hearings. January 14th will be our next regular board meeting. We're not going to adjourn. We're going to close out the meeting so that we can go in a closed session. We still have some additional items that we must discuss. And again, I thank you all for coming out. It's been my pleasure to serve as board president. I will not be seeking another term as board president, so this will be my final time at the microphone. And, you know, I know some people out there cheering, you know, but it's really been my honor, so I just want to thank everybody for the privilege of serving and, and my colleagues on the board for allowing me to serve as board president.
As a president, I consider it an honor and privilege to have served with you.
Thank you. Thank you. And with that, we are in recess.